Looking at everything, while there are some punch list items that the department's been very cooperative, very diligent in fixing, and there even are some things noted from a landowner yesterday that we're going to have addressed. It is, in my opinion, that it meets substantially completed work, so I don't think there's any need for additional damages or punishment towards them in that manner. And that, once those punch list items are completed, I'll file the completion report, and we can go to the completion hearing.
I've had some complaints about the rocks not leveled yet.
There are...
Anyone in particular? Because we just talked to one yesterday.
I got one down at home.
Okay, if you get them, let me or Tyler know.
Because, yeah, we'd... There's at least one field that I'm having hit again. It's a little washboardy.
Yeah.
And there were some... There were some pockets of rocks, too. But for the majority of the stretch, it was...
It was dirty.
It was... It looks really good.
I think the guy who called me was way up on the north end.
And that's where... That's where some of the...
Oh, yeah, I've talked to him.
That's where the last sections were that needed done. That have all been... They've put in a lot of work in the last 10 days, really, to polish that all up. Now, when guys work it, it's going to work rocks up more. I mean, it's just... It's just going to be... So... But as of Friday morning, which was the completion date, it all pretty well passed inspection, so... Just wanted to give that quick update, and I'll run on. Thanks all.
Thanks, Tyler. Oh, Tyler?
Yes.
Seeding.
Oh, yes. Yeah, one last quick seeding, like all of these, is sporadic. Where it took, especially being in a drought last year, some of the shaded banks took, some of them didn't. It's probably something, again, that we may want to have the discussion after project closeout or even before, start planning before, to have someone like Steyer fly seed on like they'd recommended on... Like Steyer had recommended on PAK-1. Just something to... Something that we'll probably have to have a discussion about. It's, again, I would say maybe 30% took.
We're going to get that in under the FEMA umbrella then?
I would need to talk to Leon about that.
Yeah, I will.
And I will. I'll check with Leon about how...
Right.
About any solid decisions there, but it is something that will probably be...
I think regardless of who pays for it, we probably need to address it because...
We have to know who's going to pay for it before we do it.
Not necessarily.
Hmm, I think better.
I'll just... I'll call Leon today, and we'll start there.
We need to check on it, but, yeah, that was another... Thanks.
Thanks, Sam.
Anybody else for public discussion? Stand up, please, and say who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologies. This is the type of public comment on things on your... All right. I appreciate that. My name is Craig Shainfeld, contractor with the Navigator Project. This is Tracy Gibler. She's the manager for Public Affairs for Navigator and works in the state of Iowa. Recognize on your agenda today, you're going to be discussing accepting the Planning and Zoning Board. We provided comment at that point in time. As part of the materials that we submitted, we did kind of a line-by-line, and I believe that'll be part of the packet that'll be passed along to you. What I want to do is offer an invitation to the board. Is, one of the things that a public hearing process doesn't necessarily allow is the time to actually kind of go through some of the technical things. A lot of the questions that the public had, that Planning and Zoning had, you just can't get into. And what I'd offer, and what we've done in other counties, is kind of workshop, technical meeting, that allows free flow of conversation between us, the project, and all the questions that you would have. So if that's something that the board may be interested as you start debating that issue, we would offer that. We always like to work in collaboration, cooperation. We've got a lot of success with Van Buren County as they've worked through their ordinance process. Many counties have used this template that is going to be coming before you today. I know you're represented by Mr. Whipple. That template is, you're probably all aware of, is subject to litigation in a variety of different counties. And what we like to do on the front end is talk to you, have a conversation, where's some common ground, where's some opportunities to collaborate? So that litigation, like you're seeing over in Emmett County, where we participated with Summit, Framer County, which has similar ordinance, we don't want to do that. We've had several months of conversation in Van Buren County to the point where we think the county is very happy with what they've put forward and something certainly we can work with. So I offer that out to the board as an opportunity. If that's something that interests you, we bring in the technical experts virtually or however it would work. But we all... I just wanted to offer that opportunity to the board as you start discussing that, Matt.
Any comments from the board? Do you have a card with you?
I do, thank you. Pass them all around?
It's up to you.
Sure.
That'll work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Feel free to reach out at any point in time with questions.
We will do that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Tracy's got the cards as well here.
Thanks. Thank you. Any discussion from the public? Please state your name when you come up.
Dave Weldon. I live out by the Ermita Bridge. This Summit Pipeline will come within 600 feet of our home. And as I was laying in bed the other night, one of these loaded train cars was going in that's opposite our land across from the river about, oh, I suppose, a half mile away from us. And you can actually feel the vibration in the ground and in our home when one of those loaded trains goes through there. And this proposed pipeline is going to go down the river bridge and across the river basin and then under that railroad track about 600 feet. Well, I got to thinking, Cassuth County, from east to west, is 24 miles wide, if I'm right. And these pipeline sections, from what I understand, are going to be either 40 feet or 80 feet long. Well, I assumed if they're 80 feet long, if you divide that into the feet across Cassuth County, there's going to be 1,584 welded joints in that pipe just going across Cassuth County. That's just Cassuth County. And if you look at... If they're figuring 700 miles across Iowa, that gets it up to 46,200 welded joints. And I'm assuming that they're going to have the most sophisticated welding equipment that you can have when they weld those joints. But also assuming they're going to have to do this in some pretty wicked weather conditions, probably. They're going to be working in the mud and hot and cold. That just seems like that's a kind of a far-fetched thing to think that, over time, they're not going to be a problem somewhere along the line of one of them joints. And hopefully, it's not going to be the one that's 600 feet from my home. The other thing is, where we're at out there, that's going to run parallel to the gravel road. There's three business driveways just in that little stretch there where that pipeline is going to be probably within 100 feet of those three business driveways. Assuming that a leak occurs while one of those businesses is having customers and stuff, just seems like a far-fetched idea to me that that's not a very good idea. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else had your hand up?
Yeah. I'm Tony Brown from by Soy City. I guess it's my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Commission passed unanimously after they took into account safety setbacks from the city, residences, animal feeding operations, things like that, they passed unanimously. I guess today, I would ask that you guys go with their recommendations. And all the people sitting back here are concerned of where this pipeline's going. And, you know, just take into account if it was going next to your house or your animal feeding operation or your grandkid's school. How far are you on that pipeline away from...
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Yeah.
I'm Grant Carey. I'm a senior project manager with Summit Carbon Solutions. I work directly with Kylie Lang, who I'm sure you're more familiar with than myself. Just a couple of comments before you go into your discussion today. I just would really push to review the existing regulations from both the federal and state perspective when it regards to how to just look at pipelines and their construction and operation. Much like Navigator offers, we'd be more than willing to come in and sit down and talk to you about those existing regulations and answer any and all questions in a session. And I do have some cards with me more than half your leaflets if you accept.
As far as the federal regulations, they haven't come down yet to change?
I'm sorry?
The change on the federal regulations for safety haven't come down?
I know that they've discussed possibly changing CO2 or adding, you know, additional requirements to theirs, but no, they have not produced any, sir. Cards? I've got a couple, I'm sorry. Share.
We can share. Just one... Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for public discussion? If you're sitting behind the pole, I can't see you, so...
Nobody.
If not, we will...
I do have something to say, I'm sorry.
Okay, come on up and please state your name.
I am just a mom and my name is Cheryl Traynor. It seems like many, many months, we've heard jobs, 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 and all these windmills have gone up because of jobs, 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 jobs. And it's... There's a lot of drawbacks to having all these windmills around. But it's all about jobs, all about jobs. And then this comes along, and that all goes out the window because it takes away a lot of jobs. And so, you know, where... Follow the money. What's the reason? And, you know, that's really my thought on this. It's just like, what is the reason that they're putting this in when it's at a danger? It makes all of our property value go down. We have, you know, really no say in it except for you guys. And so, it just, you know, none of us wants this at all. And we just feel like, oh, when it's one way, it's... We don't like it. The one-nill thing, we don't like it. But it's all about jobs, that's the good thing. And this takes away jobs. And so, why can't it be even-handed? We don't want this. And it's taking away a lot of jobs for people, common people like us that we know. So that's all I want to say.
Which pipeline would affect you?
I live at Meadowridge, I live by Rich Steel.
Summit.
That'd be Summit.
Yeah.
Summit.
That's it.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, I would like to speak. Thank you, guys. My name is Rich Steel from Algonquin. And earlier on this process, I asked you guys to keep an open mind. And there are alternatives coming. And Aaron Jordan, C.R.F., Gazette, and I sent a couple out. They're in-house, and this technology is coming. And it would be a shame that these pipelines are obsolete that they were built. And they're able to produce methanol, which is even a greener project... Or greener, excuse me. And that can be substituted with diesel and such. So it's not, if we are against the farmers, if we do this or that, actually, you're going to be for them if you keep an open mind and realize there is alternatives that are coming and available. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Seeing none, no more discussion, I would take a motion to approve the minutes dated 11th of April and the agenda for today.
So moved.
Motion by Spector. Second by Carter. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We need a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims for today.
So moved.
Motion by Spector. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Carter. Any discussion on the claims today?
Yeah, I have questions, so... I guess Josh here, lodging for the third judicial... I guess that's something that's new. Most of the other guys that have been on that work before haven't done lodging. I guess it's one of those two-day meetings, or...
No, it was a one-day meeting, but due to me being on the... You know, that's my first time there, they wanted me to come a little bit earlier. So that meant, you know, waking up earlier and driving. I just figured it would be safer for me to go down the night before instead of trying to, you know, wake up at 4:30 in the morning and drive down. They wanted me to come in early to, you know, talk with Maureen a little bit and learn a little bit more about the third judicial district. So I felt it was better for my safety to go the night before.
So, it's either two different months, the weather's... Four, 12, you must have turned in two months of the same...
Yeah, I turned in three claims at the same time.
That wouldn't have been...
Those were different trips.
No, no, the... Yeah, so two of the other trips were for the state supervisors meeting. And the...
Because mileage was the same, that's why I thought it was the same.
Yeah, because they're both down to Des Moines roughly in the same area.
But those are different trips, right?
Yeah. The one with state supervisors, the other was the ISEC spring conference.
I was just curious if that had been done with other members that have been on the third judicial, the lodgings.
Right, right. And I don't expect it to in the future. It was just this one, they wanted me there a little bit before the meeting. Plus, it was, you know, over a three-hour drive, so it had been at 4:30 in the morning. I didn't figure, you know, make any safety...
It's an ice time, 4:30 in the morning. I usually get up to... It's nice out. The days are special in the morning. Don't... Any other comments on claims? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the claims and conservation claims, please say aye.
Can I get a call for question? Roll call, please.
You want a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call both, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wachter?
Upstain.
Spector?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
So I just...
No, you just passed them now?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
On this one, if you abstain, just put your name over here where there's not a line.
Okay.
Because you abstained from the claims on this, too.
Right, write your na... Sign your name and then say abstain behind it to make it clear.
And then it'll say that in a minute.
Oh, Roger. You want to sign your name?
Well, I did the most important thing I've seen.
There you go.
Dan, you want to come up?
Yep, I am, yes, I am.
We'll give them a minute to sign, and then we'll be ready for your report.
Okay.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You think 4:30 is a good time in the morning, though?
Uh, no.
Don't want any...
The previous lifeline day started about 0:00, 200 in the morning, so...
So you had enough of that by now?
I did, indeed, I did, yes.
Nobody bothers you at 4:30 in the morning, though?
That's because they're all sleeping.
We're ready, Dan, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I just want to confirm, did you get the emails that I sent for you on my update? Okay, well, for the month of March, the department was pretty busy. We had 64 telephone calls, 71 messages consisting of voicemail, email, and US mail. I had 54 walk-ins, scheduled appointments were 27, one out of the office. We transported three veterans to VA appointments, and we got five hearing agents. Currently, on the number of claims that we're working on, my system records, I'm up to 1,140. Number of claims in the VA system presently, 49. Ready for decision, which means VA just has to make a determination, is five. Claims under development, which are currently in my office and I'm working on, is 11. Supplemental claims and appeals is two. And then we did four veterans' healthcare enrollments or reenrollments. Currently, just completed my training for the spring conference in Des Moines. That concluded on Friday. And we also completed the new CBSO training. We had 131 BSOs in the state present. Did have an opportunity to have a Q and A with Senator Joni Ernst and also had some Q and A with the Commandant of the Iowa Department of Veterans, Tajakobis, and also his executive officer. The national conference that's being held in Madison, Wisconsin, I had reserved my motel room because they hadn't opened up yet on the website, the enrollment. Then come to find out, they limited the actual in-person enrollment to the first 500 people. They opened the enrollment the week that I was at school. So the first thing I tried to do yesterday was go, okay, I better get enrolled because I haven't had a chance to do that. And enrollment has been paused because of in-person numbers reaching that 500 limit right now. It's supposed to reopen again on the 20th. So Plan B is this, I canceled my motel reservation and going to try and re-enroll on the 20th to do the virtual training and have that accomplished over in my department the week in June that they're putting that on. So that's the goal for that right now because of max enrollment in-person attendance. Was also informed last week that the Iowa trust fund is solvent. I've got to take a look at the new application procedures that they require for that and had the opportunity to meet some of the new folks that have been appointed by the governor on the commission. So I've got to take a look at that yet. Our veterans legislation, primarily concerning Chapter 35B and other recommended changes, is currently stalled at this point in time. Don't know if that's going to get acted on this year or not. There was every indication, probably not. So just have to go back to the well and try again next year if it doesn't go any further. Outreach activities, I did complete the Veterans Information Night up in Bancroft. Had met with 10 veterans and got three appointments out of that. Lots of good questions on the PACT Act, so I'll continue to work that. Continuing to work the public service announcement and the advertising for two new commissioners. I'm going to try and get that over to the newspaper office yet this week, probably tomorrow morning, and start running that. And then, of course, I meet with my commissioners this Thursday, since I was gone to school last Thursday, so we're a little bit out of cycle.
You got new commissioners yet?
Not yet.
Got to advertise for them.
Got to start the advertising and then the selection piece.
So that'll be in July?
Yes, yes. I did include with your handouts the US Service Academy flyer from Senator Grassley and Ernst that talked about a virtual meeting where those that were interested in the Military Academy can sign up for that. So you have that information. And also, there's a new veteran and hunting and fishing license available as of the 12th. And currently, the do-ups that I have is I'm working on your quarterly report that's due here in about another week, as I understand, so... But, yeah, that'll be something that my commissioners will be taking a look at on Thursday, so... Subject to your questions, that's all I have at this time. It's been a pretty busy March, and April hasn't really changed either. I don't have all the metrics on some of that, but workload is steadily increasing because of the fact that the weather's getting nice and a lot more people are coming and stopping by the office, so...
Any questions for Dan?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Willie, come on up. We'll ask you questions.
So as you see in your pocket, Will has provided the three different companies that are needed to complete this project for the damper and mover. Climate Control is one, their proposal's 1,500. American Glass is the second. Their part of the project would be 300. And Algonquin Plumbing and Heating, their part is... Let's see, oh, 4,588 dollars. So we will need all three of those to complete the project.
Comments, Willie?
Questions that I can give, comments, any questions?
This should fix our issues of the doors, icing and everything?
Yeah. Well, not icing, no. That's just in the door manufacturer.
Okay.
We... They're better...
The pressure on them?
The pressure, they will actually close now because we have relief. Would have, will have relief for the air to go somewhere that we're pulling in from outside.
Was it... This wasn't thought about when we originally did...
We never had control of the building, so there used to be a dial down there, and you go down and turn it a little bit and think that you got it. You might turn it some more, and you had old steel doors before that. It's kind of like a, you know, you fix one thing and find out, oh, that's... We still have a problem.
Any questions for Willie?
This would be around $6,000 total then, or a little over?
Like Chris is a... The climate control one is a worst-case scenario. If he has to make a special trip to do the wiring and all stuff, he will try and combine it with the project at the jail or when he's at the hospital.
Sure.
And then it'll be less money.
Yeah, I didn't know, not to exceed.
Yeah, no, it won't be over 15, and Scott's the bid. Top... All American Glass has to do is remove the glass so we don't have to bust it out.
Right, right.
Any other questions for Willie? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the loser in damper controls for the courthouse. Plath? I'll second that motion. Any discussion on it now that we have first and second? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thanks, Willie.
You bet.
Hey, Doug, we're ready for you.
Yep.
It's in your area, Casey. Aaron Carter. Also used to call it Casey down there. I don't know if we should build all them bridges down there in South Florida County. You think them people are going to go anywhere? Are you? Oh, we darn it. Should we put plank ones back in again?
Yeah, just the old boards and that.
Yeah.
Number of many of them left?
You got a handful.
There's a few out in the gravel, so yeah.
Yeah, we got.
Or private lines.
Got three in the north end of the county, yeah. Most of them are up by the state line.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Got Pony Trust up there, yeah.
Yeah, there's one across.
Mile from the state line.
My handful, I use, still have one. They're gone, yeah.
Yeah?
Down there, Dan.
There's a few left, not many.
Put it right here and say, thank you. Good morning again.
Good morning Doug, we are ready for the first bridge.
Okay, yes. Yes, we, uh, last week in our program, we talked about two bridges that would be reconstructed, replaced uh, using federal funds. We have agreements with the Department of Transportation to replace those standard agreements uh, that they have used for many, many years, so. The first bridge is a BRSC zero five five parentheses one ninety-nine double dash six zero dash fifty-five. Uh, this is a bridge that is located right south of Taitanka on P sixty-six. I think there is a location map included in your, uh, electronic folder, and there's a motion to approve.
And these would be in two separate motions, correct?
Yes, that's what I think.
Yes.
And I prepared that, okay, very, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. My fault, I didn't catch that.
I would move to approve the first bridge project, uh, in Buffalo Township.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Jerks, a second by Stecker, any discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Roger, you'd say all in favor of voting. I'd be led off the.
Okay, we'll, we'll do this, we'll do this.
So I'm sorry, I apologize.
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes, Greg?
Yes.
Alright, sorry about that.
No, you're good, we're just testing you Doug.
The right-of-way ones, correct?
Yeah.
Alright. The second, uh, federal agreement is for project BRSC zero five five parentheses two hundred double dash five F dash fifty-five, and that project is located, uh, south of Hobarton on the Vogtle Hobarton Road, uh, P thirty, um, for replacement, again. Standard agreement with the board, and I apologize for the, uh, names.
I'll move to agree with that.
I have a motion by Carter, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wacter? Any discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now I need a couple signatures here. This would be for both, uh, Roger and Dan, there. Alright, very good, thank you.
We are up to the road right away, Doug.
Uh... Do you want?
Oh, okay.
Do you want Chris?
Yeah, we'll do planning and zoning, I just got ahead of it here.
Okay. Uh, yes, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, first of all, I'd like to publicly thank the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, Brian Tool, our chair, Dave Rock is the vice-chair, um, Steve Strucker, Mark Studer, and Jim Haldor for, for the work that they completed. I'm presenting you a copy of the report and information uh, that, uh, has been, uh, received by them, and I'll go over this report briefly here once you have it, so that you can kind of, uh, get an idea of what's going on there. Uh, December twenty-two, the Board, uh, Cassup County Board of Supervisors requested that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, review and evaluate an ordinance that amended various sections of the Cassup County zoning ordinance for the purpose of regulating and restricting the use of land for the transport of hazardous liquid through a hazardous liquid pipeline. On February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, uh, to gather comments from, uh, people about the proposed ordinance. On April third of twenty twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and discussed the comments received and created this report, uh, for the Board of Supervisors. On April seventeenth, yesterday, these Planning and Zoning Commission met, and they approved the report, so today I present it to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the report itself has a summary of the hearing, there's an introduction, a summary of the hearing, a summary of the findings, and then recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, which are located on page four of six. Those recommendations include, uh, the current ordinance that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission use and effective date, uh, of the zoning ordinance is July twenty-three, nineteen seventy-three, and actually that date is October, uh, twenty-second of nineteen seventy-three. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that that date be changed. Uh, there is a, uh, paragraph on the, on the findings, uh, where there's a public health, the statement is that the public health, uh, position, uh, that they, they make some sort of a statement, we could not verify, though, that, that.
They, we hadn't, we hadn't had a, uh, a court, so we have to do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Should be able to, uh, take that up tomorrow.
So, again, if, we could not verify the statement exists, if there is one, then you, that paragraph would be valid. If there is not one, then the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends deleting it. Uh, separation distances, uh, in paragraph twenty-five, forty-two, twenty-five, forty-three, and twenty-five, forty-four, uh, it's recommended that they be changed from one-half of one mile to three thousand feet, and that is shown in exhibits A, that should, excuse me, I'm mistaken. I should walk through all of this. That is, uh, in exhibits B two and C two. Apologize for that. And then a price, uh, there is a paragraph twenty-five, seventy-two where a price for a conditional use permit is fifty dollars. Conditional use permits today would have an application fee of one hundred dollars, and we would recommend that, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend that that be changed to one hundred dollars. Appendix A, that is the ordinance presented, and in red, you can see where those changes, uh, are, amendment to that. Appendix B one is an oversized sheet in your handout. That shows, uh, an approximate location, uh, based on, uh, PDFs that we've received from Summit Carbon Solutions. Uh, our GIS department, I'd like to say thank you to Luke Snyder for his help. Uh, we created the center line of the CO2 pipeline, the proposed pipeline. We included in the hatched area, that would be one-half of one mile on each side of the center line. Uh, that would show that buffer. Uh, the black dots in that buffer are nine-one-one addresses, which include animal feeding operations, occupied residences, wind generators, and other, other types of situations that have nine-one-one addresses. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there is a hole in there, it just means there's a nine-one-one address associated with that. And you can see in the half-mile, uh, pipeline buffer, there are eighty-one in parentheses, the nine-one-one addresses, there are eighty-one in that. Uh, it also includes a two-and-a-half-mile city buffer, uh, around all the cities. And then public recreation areas, uh, are in green, that would be within the one-half-mile buffer. Appendix B two, again, is the center line of the Summit Carbon Solutions. Uh, this time the buffer is three thousand feet. The nine-one-one addresses within the buffer are ninety-three. Uh, two-and-a-half-mile border is again, uh, in the, in the document and the public recreation area. Appendix C one is the Navigator Pipeline, center line, the approximate location, where it is at with a half-mile, this has forty-six, uh, nine-one-one addresses within it, and also the public area. Uh, we also in red on that one, uh, the Valero Renewable Fuels Plant is shown, and that plant is within both the two-and-a-half-mile radius of Lakota and the two-and-a-half-mile radius of Lead Yard. Uh, if this, if this ordinance would be, uh, would be approved by the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Adjustment would have to act in order for any kind of a, uh, pipeline to hook up to that ethanol plant. And then appendix C two is, uh, the same document with a three-thousand-foot pipeline buffer, and there are fifty-three nine-one-one addresses within that buffer. Appendix, uh, C, uh, D are the Department of Natural Resources Minimum Separation Distances for construction and or expansion of, uh, animal feeding operations. And the board used this document to justify the three-thousand, uh, foot setback requirement. And then, uh, appendix E are all of the written comments that we received uh, during the public hearing, and on page, uh, E two of that document is kind of an index of the different comments that were received and who, who they were from. So with that, that is the report. Again, I would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission, Brian, Mark, Dave, Jim, and Steve, uh, very much for their time. And if there are any questions as the board starts reviewing this, I would be happy to, uh, answer them. And also this will be put on our website under the zoning department, uh, shortly after every this week. It will be available electronically.
And your request for us today is to accept the report, we're not acting on anything?
It would be accepting the report.
Just wanted to clarify that.
I would make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Report, uh, for the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance addressing regulation and restriction of hazardous water pipelines.
So I have a motion by Nash to accept the report, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wacter, discussion? In accepting the report, we are not.
Correct, we're not taking any action.
We're not taking any action, I don't want everybody to know that.
It's just receiving the paperwork, basically.
So I would suggest that we all read it and get familiar with it?
Yep.
Any other comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the report, please say aye.
Can, can we do a roll call for this?
Sure.
Just for the topic?
Plath?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
What does our timeline look then forward, moving forward from here? As far as what the next steps would be?
Well, I think that you're gonna need to visit a little bit with Tim Whipple about that, but I'm making some assumptions, you're gonna have to, um, hold a public hearing. You're gonna have to publish, um, meet all the publication requirements, hold a public hearing, and have three readings, or, and, uh, then become effective upon publication.
Um, so when it comes to that paragraph that was removed, um, recommended to be removed, how do we go back from that, if that statement gets approved by the public health? What happens then, you know, in that process?
We vote to remove that from the report.
Or we vote it?
Before we accept a report.
Okay.
Well, it's, you, I, I'm pretty sure the Board of Supervisors can do many things here. You can choose to accept recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. You can accept some, accept, accept all, you can change them the way you want. The Public and Zoning Commission has done their job. That's really what's going on right there.
Yep.
Because now the Board of Supervisors have their job to do.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we go through proper steps, to make sure that we.
Well, that's, that's where you need to get a, get on the phone with Tim Whipple because he will make sure and guide you through the process.
Okay.
After the meeting, I will send him an email and let him know what happened today, and then he will probably email everybody and let us know what happens from there.
Okay, I think that phone call is very important.
Yeah.
Very good.
We are out to.
Health insurance?
Yep, discussion on health insurance options for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Everybody get their iPads back on.
Thank you everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Donna is here, but could somebody please intercom her at the switch and fight?
Hey, can you come over to the boardroom, we are ready for health insurance.
I'll be right back.
Uh, yep, thanks.
Close out the room.
Apparently nobody wants to hear about health insurance.
Apparently not.
She didn't even know it was on the agenda.
She didn't?
Thanks for signing the list.
I always forget intentionally.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for answering.
I don't even think that many, Cassup County.
Twenty-nine percent, last number.
The states on whole, um, they're saying, but they still say they have to have ninety percent.
I don't know, the states turn chicken on this, they aren't gonna make a ruling. They, they wanna let us do it.
See what happens. Guess we just do our part?
Thanks, Tommy.
Well, it's just, it's, it's such a...
I don't know what all that is, empty box?
Well, that's what our...
Yep. Morning, Donna.
Good morning.
Yeah.
I missed it. I thought we weren't gonna get it on this week.
I thought so too, and then he sent me a request.
So Tammy, is there...
Thursday afternoon, Thursday afternoon, I was...
And I think I, I know I looked at really dendum, but I think I just...
Uh, what should we, uh, have to approve tomorrow before having, is there that?
Just...
Just approve the planning and zoning?
What their recommendation is.
You look at the crossed-out portion, I mean, that would be the...
Yeah, whatever's crossing.
Yeah.
Just getting approval from them to have that added in and put back, I'd say, okay.
Boy, Donnie, you know how to clear a room.
Not yet.
I don't know, Donna, I don't know.
Maybe I should come more often?
Yeah.
Just say insurance and everybody writes.
Yeah, we did the newspaper, they, yeah, I mean, yeah, it was good, it was good, they didn't stay.
Okay, insurance. Um, first here.
Thank you.
I think the first, I don't know if this has five or six pages on it. I got two of them there, Roger, sorry. The first four pages, I believe, uh, the board has seen. The last page is another, uh, another option for renewing insurance. I'm gonna come over by Donna, because I don't, in case I need to see you or talk or do something. So we all kind of talk together. So, that top page is what we are currently operating under as far as renewal rates. So seven-one, twenty-twenty-two to six-thirty, twenty-twenty-three, which has a five-hundred-dollar deductible and our stop loss is thirty-five thousand. The second page is what was given to us initially for renewal rates and kind of what we based our, our budget off, which again is a five-hundred-dollar deductible and a thousand-dollar deductible, thirty-five-thousand-dollar stop loss. And using our budgeted numbers, uh, we have three million, an estimated three million, two-hundred-forty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-forty-seven dollars of expenses. And our revenue is two million, four-hundred-six-thousand, eight-hundred-forty. So Donna and I have been visiting a little bit, and we actually talked a little bit with K-Ren about some different options in the board, and we've talked a little bit also, some things that we could possibly do to lower our expenses or maybe take on a little bit more risk, uh, to, uh, the opportunity to lower expenses. The third sheet is a five-hundred-dollar deductible and one-thousand-dollar deductible and the forty-five-thousand-dollar, uh, stop loss. Again, we get about that, uh, three million, two-hundred-thousand, uh, of insurance costs there. Uh, the, our actual medical insurance is estimated, what we've used in budget is three million, two-hundred-thirteen-thousand, eight-hundred-forty-seven, which is on the second sheet. The, if you look at suggested rates right here, going across, it ends up being that number, three million, two-hundred-thirteen-thousand, eight-hundred-forty-seven. The forty-five thousand, the estimated would be reduced to three million, two-hundred-seven-thousand, which is, you know, a few thousand dollars cheaper. I, a few, estimated a few thousand dollars less expensive, let's put it that way. Uh, if we would move the same deductible and move that individual stop loss to sixty thousand, we could, uh, move that estimated, uh, cost down to three million, one-hundred-eighty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-nine, which again is a, a reduction. And one thing that we asked for, and this is one I do not believe the board has, uh, looked at, I just couldn't remember, and I didn't look through my notes, a deductible of seven-hundred-fifty-thousand and fifteen-hundred, and individual stop loss of forty thousand. And that would, uh, our estimated suggested would cost, or our estimated cost would be three million, one-hundred-sixty-three-thousand, one-hundred-twenty-one-thousand, or one-hundred-twenty-one dollars. And the big part of this that would be reduced is administrative costs. With the five-hundred-dollar and thousand-dollar deductible and the thirty-five-thousand, uh, stop loss, our administrative costs move, move from one million, three-hundred-seventy-thousand to one million, three-hundred-six-thousand. Now, there is a little bit of an increase, or actually, it's a little bit of a decrease in the, uh, claims as well. So I'm bringing this up to try to reduce our expenditures in, uh, in the health insurance. But also, Donna is beginning open enrollment. And we need to, I, I just don't know if the board has made a decision on what they wanna do with their final, what their final policy should be.
Doug, I got a question here. Um, for this last one, we've got forty thousand for stop loss, but on the previous three, we don't have anything that that would match up with. We got thirty-five, forty-five, and sixty. Um, so...
Yeah, I did.
Can we get one with thirty-five thousand for stop loss, keeping that the same? Cause, I mean, if you compare thirty-five and the current deductible to forty, and the increase in deductibles, it's not quite out.
I, we can ask for anything.
Okay.
Um, we have not. I, I did ask for, was it the same deductible? Or did we, did we increase that to one thousand?
We did.
And two thousand, and out-of-pocket max, uh, to...
Did you, one thousand, two thousand?
Yes, but we are waiting for that to come back from the underwriting.
I was thinking that we had discussed during the seven-fifty and fifteen-hundred for the deductibles?
We, we talked about different ones.
We didn't, we didn't decide.
Yeah, we discussed.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I, again, mentally, I thought we had talked about that. I don't know if I gave this to you, Josh, or not, so I just...
I don't think we had the papers at the time. I think we talked about it.
We did discuss it, but, yeah.
We can't, you know, we don't seem to be getting anywhere with how employees start paying something towards it. So, you know, one way to, to get around that would be to bump those up. I think, you know, I think a thousand...
Two thousand?
Two thousand, or, you know, or fifteen hundred, three thousand. That we, we get somebody, you know, that will, and we're all leaning something towards it.
Well, there's nobody has insurance anymore as good as ours.
No. But if we're not gonna start to have people pay for it, then I might as well start raising that deductible. That would get some, some bite of it.
Doug, maybe I'm remembering wrong, but weren't you talking about them being reimbursed for part of that?
Well, that, that is an option. I'm gonna shut this door here quick. Discussion out there, but at one time, uh, in our self-insurance history, uh, we reimbursed deductible. So it went back to, uh, I believe at the time it was, we had, our insurance coverage was a five-hundred-dollar and a thousand-dollar deductible, and we reimbursed it back to two-hundred-fifty and five-hundred. And the largest amount we ever, uh, in a, in a year that we reimbursed was seventeen thousand dollars. Using that figure and putting some numbers together, uh, I actually, using twenty-five thousand dollars as a budget figure, we would end up with about, what I calculated quickly, to be three million, two-hundred-thirteen-thousand, one-hundred-twenty-one dollars, uh, that would be spent. And that would save us from what we have budgeted right now, uh, thirty thousand, seven-hundred-twenty-six dollars, or one percent.
And that's if you reimbursed?
That's reimbursing that total, twenty-five thousand. Anything that was not reimbursed, anything that was not, uh...
I don't think, uh, we're down that road again.
It's just more administration then, so...
And it's not, or, and, you know, we, we...
That's fine.
We're looking, we're looking at ways to, you know, let's just add more cost to it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think...
But then, you're gonna have employees that are saying you're taking away a benefit that way?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is gonna be a big, big difference for employees, and, uh...
Well...
Well, Donna, maybe you need to say what you need for open enrollment, which needs to be taken care of shortly.
Yeah, we have open enrollment on Friday for the secondary roads, and then on the third for the employees. I guess my concern, or my, for you guys, is you don't have a plan, and we, we don't tell them, and then you're gonna change something. I think that's worse. I mean, that's, that's very, that's not, it's unfair.
Yep.
Um, I think, you know, trying to come to something flexible, I, one of the, for the reimburse, it would save, I mean, most, a lot of people don't utilize that, so that's why it's unpredictable, but it, it does kind of soften those changes.
I, I could see where, if you increase the deductible, but then reimburse it back, it should save us on the Wellmark side of the administration, because it would cut a portion out of their bill, and we would take on that, which I would be much more comfortable raising the deductible and reimbursing it back than changing stop loss. I, I guess, from what I've looked at, I think that would be a recipe for disaster for us. From the previous years, I don't think that's a benefit, but adjusting the deductible, I think that could save on the bottom end, which would affect their, their price to us much more substantially.
Raising the stop loss a little does save you in the long run on what your full insurance costs.
Only if, only if your claims don't exceed it. Cause the previous years, they've actually covered the burden.
Sixty-eight dollars a month difference between thirty-five and four.
But your maximum liability to the fund goes up because we're paying the difference on...
Right, but you're not paying it on everybody, only the ones that use it. Then you're getting the benefit from everybody, isn't my point?
But we've had high numbers of that, so...
Five-hundred thousand a month for insurance, plus they have a five-thousand-dollar deductible. And, you know, outside, outside of you. Right, so I don't think a thousand-dollar deductible, two-thousand-dollar deductible is anything out of line.
Jack, if we went from seven to seven-fifty and fifteen-hundred, and then next year went to a thousand, to a thousand, wouldn't that be more appropriate?
Something...
Softer, about my opinion is all. Open for discussion.
I, I think that's not a bad option. I, I would kind of agree with Jack on the thousand and two thousand, but if we do that, I think we should reimburse it back. And I think that would save our plan, and it would not impact employees as substantially. So I think that would maybe be a best of all worlds.
So do we cap the reimbursed amount?
Yeah, you'd have to reach the reimbursement amount from two-fifty to five-hundred or something.
So reimburse fifty percent of our deductible, is what you're saying?
Basically, so, so in essence, to the employee, their deductible would stay the same, but to our insurance, it would change.
Okay.
And the only way to get, and the only way to reimburse is if it's a, is if it's a...
You'd be...
Yeah, they, they are required, employees are required to submit an explanation of benefits.
It has to be on something like a surgery or...
So then just go into the doctor's stuff, know that qualifies.
It has to apply towards the...
Yeah, that, well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't count towards your deductible anyway, but yeah. So you, there's, there's paperwork involved in it. Some people might not use it just because of the paperwork, but it would be available for those that would want or need that. So I guess...
And then you're also still looking at, what, a four percent increase?
Yeah, the revi, we're not talking revenue at all. We're just talking expenditure.
But that is part of you had a, you were talking like a four percent increase in revenue too, on top of...
I, I haven't spoken at all about revenue.
Oh, okay.
No. This is all expenses.
That's already in the budget. I would like to see a, um, sheet like this for a thousand and two thousand for deductible with the stop loss of thirty-five. And, and an estimate on where you think our reimbursement would be if we reimburse that.
What do you wanna do, out-of-pocket maximum, would be another one that you can, um, you can use, and what we've been doing is, uh, it's, for singles, it's out-of-pocket maximum's been one thousand dollars and, uh, two thousand dollars. And for this out-of-pocket maximum, we actually, uh, kept that. With the reimbursement, it would be the very same dollar amount, yes.
I would probably increase it by the same dollars, if you add five hundred to the deductible, add five hundred to that. Don't know what anyone else's thoughts would be. I'd increase it proportionally.
Usually with fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred?
Probably.
Miss Donna, you need to know...
By Friday.
By Friday, so we have to do something to do.
Well, I, you know what, honestly, I don't think you're going to, because I'm not gonna, I mean, unless...
But if, if we do, if we made a change like this, it wouldn't...
If we're gonna make significant changes, I mean, it's a difference if you're making it on your end, or if you're making it on their end.
Yeah, if we're not affecting the employees, I don't think it would impact quite as much for the open enrollment side, right?
You're still affecting them if you're asking for reimbursement, because it's still gonna be out-of-pocket at first. So you're still gonna affect them, so...
It would affect them, but to a lesser degree.
It de, it depends on how the, the timing of everything. Um, I've had situations where I've received an explanation of benefit prior to even receiving the bill.
Right.
So if a person would receive an explanation of benefit, would turn it in, they may actually receive the reimbursement prior to receiving the bill. If a person waits till the end of the year, pays all of their bills, and then submits an explanation benefit, yeah, they're not gonna, they're gonna have to pay their bill before they receive it. So some of that, yes, employees need to, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna have to have some responsibility there, but they...
And the ones who don't use it at all wouldn't have any impact. But it would impact our cost on the health insurance side, because Wellmark's rate should come down.
Well, again, uh, you gotta look at, really what Wellmark is getting for rates is their administrative costs. The other dollars are expended as far as the expected claims, those are actually paid by Cassius County. Wellmark pays them, then they bill us. We pay Wellmark for those expected claims.
Yeah, that's...
They make, they make an estimate of what our expected claims are based on stop loss, based on deductible, based on how healthy our group is. They, they take a lot of things in there, and then they, they, uh, somehow make a prediction of what that is. But the administrative fees, we pay. We're gonna pay that much, depending on the number of, uh, policies that are being used.
That don't change.
No.
No matter what we do.
And individual stop loss, last year, the year we're at right now, is six-hundred-eighty-two... Individual stop loss, last year, the year we're at right now is six hundred eighty-two dollars, that's what we're paying per plant for individual stop loss. That is not covering our costs anymore, so what do you see? It's going up to eight hundred eighty-four dollars per policy to cover. What they expect and I don't know if it's to, we've, we've been subsidized by other insurers' policies. So they're, they need to get us straightened up and get those other policies straightened out also.
You're gonna, we gotta get rid of the sick people.
Well, that's, that's a whole nother discussion, but. Fact of the matter is that, uh, yeah, health insurance is trying to.
I knew, I, I'll just wait for a comment, Roger, I knew he's taking a foot.
Yeah.
I suppose you can get, get, get a foot somewhere.
Well, I guess really what. What I hope to achieve here is to get. Get something, some sort of a decision to give Donna guidance on her open enrollment, which I'm hearing. The employees are not going to, um. Have any change, it may be. A. A way of administering deductible, but in the end of the year. They would be reimbursed, so it would be, if it's single, it'd be five hundred and if it's a, uh, if it's a family, it would be thousand.
So.
Which I think is fair and I think also we need to get a little bit of a strategy. For the next five years. For example, maybe we let our employees know that in the next five years, we're gonna. Or maybe the next two years, we're going to go from five hundred to seven fifty and then nothing. We can allow employees to. What's that?
Health savings.
Remember the flexible spending. It will allow employees to know that yes, this is happening. I'm gonna end up having to spend more out of my pocket for health insurance however I can do it. So that's pre.
So they can plan.
Pre-tax planned, cause that's, yeah, cause we do July is when we start and then our flex starts in January, so right now they're in the middle of the year, so we change it.
So we can.
There's, there's multiple ways that they're being impacted.
But if we can communicate this, it will help out.
So basically this plan. Starts in July, what time is it?
Our health insurance starts in July, but they, they sign up for their flex in November for the following January, so they're six months into it when this comes into it. So whatever they pre-tax, they planned on would be changing.
Yep.
Would be January.
And that's not.
Yeah, it just, it, it is, so there's multiples of you're asking to pay plus you're asking them to not be able to plan for pre-tax, you're kinda hitting double whammies. That's a good explanation.
So what we're saying is we're gonna leave the deductible at five hundred and a thousand until January?
I don't think you can do that.
No.
It would actually be for the, the. The guidance we're looking for would be the plan year, which is July one through June thirty.
Okay, we're back to July one through June thirty.
Yeah, you can't change.
And that's, that's.
It's a fiscal year for the.
That's why I think we need to keep the impact to employees as close to what it currently is now as possible.
But then I also think you ought to. Tell employees that it will probably get raised, the deductible in the future.
Which is to Doug's point of planning and communication for following years, yeah.
So my thought would be to do the deductible at seven fifty and fifteen hundred for this next year. Um, keep the stop loss at thirty-five. And then let them know that the following year, the deductible is gonna increase to one thousand, two thousand. And then we could implement the reimbursement the following year.
At fifty percent?
At fifty percent.
That's your.
So you wouldn't have any reimbursement this next year or you would?
I mean, what are you guys' thoughts?
Do you wanna do fifty percent for this year?
So you're saying raising it two fifty and five hundred without reimbursing that? Then, then you would be impacting employees without them being able to plan for it.
Can we set a, a reimbursement maximum dollar amount or does it have to be by percentage?
It is maximum dollar.
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 Okay, so if we do, so if we increase it seven fifty and fifteen hundred, but we do a reimbursement of two fifty and five hundred. Then they would, they wouldn't be seeing an increase. We would be adjusting our deductible, but they won't actually see an increase because they can get that reimbursement.
So yours would be along the same lines of what I said, but you would make less of an impact to the plan, which would potentially save us less money. The employees would still be at the net same with both of what we said.
Yeah.
That's why I would go higher with what Jack said, because the employee would still be taking care.
I don't know why we'd get caught up with this impact on the employee, I mean, it's still gonna be free insurance. So, so what if it costs them a couple hundred, two hundred dollars a, a year? I mean, they're not paying anything for it, why do we get so caught up with, oh, well, it might cost them two hundred fifty dollars more next year?
Well, it's gonna be more than that.
Because.
Because it's, it's.
You're making a decision in the middle of time when they can't plan for it.
Well, you're raising it out of pocket.
But it's likely gonna affect the ones that use it. That have, that have a major.
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take anything major to hit the deductible.
No.
I mean, a thousand dollars, you're, you're not gonna have anything major that necessary to hit that.
No. Alien use of their pinky last year and it was far more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're thinking a thousand, two thousand?
I would say thousand and two thousand would make more impact, what we could potentially save, but it would keep the employees at a net zero.
So what do you, and what do you read?
Do the reimbursement?
Do the reimbursement back to the five hundred and thousand where we currently are.
Fifty percent.
Yep, basically.
I don't, I don't get it, then why not just leave it at five hundred and thousand?
Because we should, we should lower our cost to Wellmark with that change, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Well.
That's minimal, you're talking.
But then you're, you're out-of-pocket and the county stays the same.
In the, in the big picture, you would say thirty thousand dollars.
The, the stop loss, i- if you're gonna keep the stop loss at thirty-five and you're gonna. Reduce the, you're just gonna cause administrative costs that aren't really gonna save you.
Right, we're not gonna save the same.
That's, you're talking pennies on a three million dollar budget, you're talking pennies.
It's the same dollars to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is, that doesn't change things significant enough to. For my, I guess in my mind.
Then I would leave it the same.
It don't, yeah, it don't change anything to me.
And.
So.
If you reimburse it back, I mean, what's the difference there?
Well, probably need to look at these options earlier than.
You're, you're getting to a point where. If. We're not funding, we're not funding the balance. The way it needs to be funded if we're gonna continue the status quo of expenses.
Right, and when, when you.
And there's gonna be a day. Where the decision's gotta be made and we gotta do. One, increase. Revenue. Or two, reduce expenditures. Or combination of both. And if we continue to kick it down, kick it down the road. That decision, that year that it gets decided is going to be that much more impactful to the board. And it's gonna be impactful to the employee. So, and if you want us to keep it the same, that's fine, but this discussion isn't going away.
Right.
Unless all of a sudden. We have. Our most expensive. Employees are no longer on the plan, but that's about fifteen, ten or fifteen.
It's then you're predicting them, but you don't know what you're gonna get, I mean, that's like, I don't know that we, that discussion is.
You get another one, yeah. It doesn't necessarily mean it.
Always gonna be somebody that's probably gonna do the end of it.
Knock on wood, I'm healthy, I, I go to get physical and everything goes well. Now, my wife, she's had a couple of things this past year that health insurance has been good to have. That are not typical.
But I mean, there's only, there's the two major impacts of the plan or you know. Increasing revenue by employees paying or, or we put more tax money into it or increasing the.
To reduce the expenditures.
That's why, I mean, I think.
And, I mean, we're.
There's gonna come a day we might have to increase that deductible to five thousand if we're not gonna have people pay, pay something towards it. Or we're just gonna, you know, make, get the taxpayers with the, with another, you know, million dollars a year charge.
Well, I think we're the only county that has zero.
Pretty much.
Participation, or is there?
There's a couple.
Is there a couple?
I gotta re, I haven't looked recently, um.
But it's an anomaly to have what insurance like we have.
July one will be another time where counties start, uh. Starting putting that data out.
Okay.
We're, we're in the current fiscal year and that's the data we get. Now whether those counties change or not, I don't know.
You if we raise this to a thousand or two thousand, we might still actually put four or five percent tax money into it to. If we're gonna fly, if we're gonna go down by, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in the fund.
We'll, we'll talk in December about that, whether that happens or not.
Two and a half million, three point two million, which certainly could happen.
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me that we talked during budget, but I don't remember it dropping several hundred thousand dollars. Unless you look at the max liability, if that's the number you're looking at, then that would've been the case for every year in the past.
Well, our, our expected claims are. Are staying the same, it's the administrative costs that's going up and that's because of the stop loss. Our expected claims are staying the same.
Yeah, that's because Wellmark subsidized us last year.
And it will each year.
And they're getting caught up, yeah. So, uh, what I'm saying is next year isn't gonna be the same as last year.
But if we had bet on ourself last year, we would've taken it in the shorts.
When you're betting on yourself this year, yeah.
You're, you're taking risks.
Yeah.
But Wellmark, Wellmark, when their underwriters estimate what their costs are. They're, they're pretty much always right.
They estimated the year before and they were short.
Well, they get it right. They make it right.
Carter?
I, I don't have other.
I mean, this is.
Additional thoughts?
Oh, this is a great benefit to the employees.
Oh, it is, and I, that's kinda my only thing is. I've had several employees say don't. Don't mind the big parents.
Well, we have to keep it li, uh, funded.
Viable.
Viable.
Yeah.
I, I, and that's, you know, you gotta balance it.
I mean, the last.
I think we discussed that thoroughly during.
The last thing we want is, and counties have done this, by not keeping their balance according. Is they end up having to just purchase a contract from whoever their people are and that would be three point four million dollars a year. That's that estimated maximum liability to fund. That's that number. So. If we're gonna go down that road and, I mean, health insurance has been very good to Casu County. We have a balance and it's better to have that balance in Casu County's hand than in Wellmark's hand. Now, y- you know, we, we. There are signs that show that our balance is reducing.
Good, that's solutions hidden healthcare too, I mean, they're not keeping.
It's not what the numbers show on our account.
What are, what are you talking about Kyle on our account?
Did you send that in?
I think right now we're down four hundred thousand dollars in our, in our auditors' balance, I don't have the figure right with me, but I'll certainly. Uh, I'll provide it to you, I'll email it to you.
The last thing we wanna do is have this fail and then have to go to the open market to buy insurance, cause it's gonna be very expensive.
And you're gonna have a big, big fail.
Do you have a suggestion, Donna, that you're moving with?
Well, I think in all fairness to employees, we, if we're gonna make a change, we don't necessarily make a change to how the employee. Deductible is right now, we, we take into consideration that somehow we will reimburse it. And if it's too late. In our thinking to do that, it doesn't mean that we can't. I mean, we can keep the deductible and the out-of-pocket maximum the same and we can just increase stop loss. Employees aren't gonna see any change in that.
We take, take more risk.
But we take more risk. I mean, we're in, let's see, ten years ago. Twenty thirteen, fourteen. Our actual cost were one million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. And at that time, I think we had a balance right around three million dollars. I'd have to go back and look, but our balance, our balancing our, has not changed too much over ten years.
Well, one.
But now we're, uh, we're looking at our, uh, budget of three point two million, three point two five million. So that's over double if my figures are correct. Or if my mental math is correct. And that was a good year, we actually ended up ninety-four thousand dollars over two thousand. No, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, excuse me, uh, we lost fifteen thousand dollars that year. But that was just about. We might've, we might've had a big, uh, reduction in the amount of money that.
We lowered the premium one year.
Yeah, we, we had a large reduction one year, cause our balance was growing so, so much.
We did lower it one year and then the next year we decided we shouldn't have probably lowered it that much, but that's insurance.
And I would be for. Being it's the time of year we're at, not that we can't make changes, but it doesn't feel like kicking the can down the road to me, cause this is new, but, but, uh. Keeping things as is until, and then having discussion for the upcoming budget in next year. I, or maybe that's not it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Is that, is that, uh. Too long to wait to make changes or is that, I mean.
Are, are you thinking at all about changing stop loss?
That reason, past, when you looked at that, that hasn't been, been a, a real big impact.
I mean, it looks like it's a few thousand dollars. I think here and there.
If you look at what our claims were last year. The, the reason Wellmark is raising the stop loss so much is because they paid more than they were expecting for our claims. So if we continue to have higher numbers of individuals crossing that stop loss level. Then keeping it the same is more of a benefit to us than changing it, so I would not change stop loss.
The problem with your thinking is then the next time we have insurance move across the field or we have the numbers, they just raise. What they're gonna charge us.
Well, what the underwriters have prov, have provided to us, for example, the second page is our very same. Uh, renewal rate is what we have right now and the estimated suggested rates are three million, two hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars. The next sheet is forty-five thousand, the estimated is three million, two hundred seven thousand, six hundred dollars. That's what we would estimate getting, having paid total, which is, I mean, six thousand bucks.
But if you look at that, if you go down to the max liability fund, you go from. Three, six, seven, four, six, two, seven to three, six, nine, eight, eight oh four, so worst case scenario, we add another. Twenty-four thousand in expenses with the potential to save six. twenty-four thousand in expenses with the potential to save six. That's.
Yeah, and if we're gonna look, if we're gonna look at estimated maximum liability to fund, wait, that's three point six million dollars. And we're bringing in two point four, that means that our balance is gonna get reduced one point two, which in three years, our balance is gone. In two years, our balance is gone. So, we, we've never approached ex- estimated maximum liability. I can again, in my email, give you the percentages over the years of what the estimated suggested and estimated maximum liability, the percent of our expenses compared to those exact, uh, estimated suggested. I can give those to you also. What did I say I was going to also, um, email to you? I can't remember.
Well, I guess if we, if we're talking health insurance again, it would be nice to have this before the meeting so we can look at some of this.
I think you, I, I'm pretty sure you have the first four sheets, um, but, and that's okay. We'll, we'll just keep it the very same as what we got it. Um, if you would like us to provide, I mean, we have what's forty-five thousand, sixty thousand, um, for stock loss. But it's something that we really need to, in the next fiscal years.
If they're leaving the same, it's almost look like we're gonna have to add, add about ten percent more tax dollars. Include ten percent of contribution.
And if, I think it's only fair to employees that if there is going to be more out-of-pocket, the possibility of more out-of-pocket expenses, that that be made aware to the employee by November?
I agree.
Or in October?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
Really, this discussion, I mean, and just saying doesn't almost end, cause you're almost.
Right, we're almost there.
I mean, if you're talking about it, you almost have to digest it and, and decide, because then to, in order for it to happen in November, things move.
Very quickly.
Very quickly, or you know, you've got so many things you're dealing with. We keep on talking about this, 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 Kieran was here January, you know, and the decision almost needs to be made three months before, so communicate that.
I would be comfortable.
It was balance.
I understand it all, but I mean, I got, I mean, I got a, I got a bill for my, my house insurance. Went up by, uh, five hundred dollars a year. My car insurance went up by a hundred dollars a year. Nobody, nobody sends me a letter and says, plan for this. I mean, I think, you know, we're talking about keeping it one hell of a good benefit solid here. We're worried about what, what a few, a few hundred dollars might be to, you know, to the, you know.
To some people, that's, that's a lot.
Well, I know, but I mean, like I said, I, I mean, I, I got hit with an extra twelve hundred dollars in expenses from my, just from my own ins- my own insurance alone. I'm sure, but I know everybody else's house insurance and car insurance went up too, cause we had to do it in the state of Iowa.
I guess I'd, I'd like to think we're, we should be a little bit more in touch with our employees than a giant insurance company sending out letters to everyone.
Well, I know, but then what, you know, if we don't address it, uh, then, then he comes inside and try to explain that to, when we have to take it or take it away.
You sure don't wanna go with the state's health insurance?
I don't, I don't feel like we're anywhere near that.
Well, I think Doug just said, you got putting in, I mean, with too many dollars a year and expenses of three point two, that sounds like a, like a million dollar.
It's, it's sounds like a failure, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's one third of the, but, that's one third of the.
Does that, does that expenses factor what Walmart is paying out of that? For anything or any, for a fifty thousand dollar bill, that fifteen thousand over our current stock loss, does that number factor that in? I don't know which, which figure you're using.
We do not pay that.
I know we don't pay that, but is that part of your number or not for the max liability? Okay.
Max liability includes everything.
I mean, that sort of stuff is not on any sheets.
Yeah, alright.
So, I guess with that, we, we're all sitting, same, same way, and I guess we just have to figure out how much you wanna add, add to the fund.
Well, we'll, we'll talk again.
Ten, fifteen, twenty minutes.
A couple of months. Keep on reviewing the fund. We'll make you aware of what the fund, how things are performing. Um, we are going to have an increase in revenue. Uh, it will be, I don't have that sheet in front of me. Do you know what, uh, family contributions and, and single contributions you're going to, from to, right off the top of your head? I don't, I don't, I got, I don't. But we will go through that then. Okay.
Brian?
Thank you guys.
Does anybody wanna make a motion on this to raise the?
I don't.
There was first discussion on the agenda. There is no decision.
No decision?
And I think that we still, I mean, the, the biggest part to me is how our, what Donna needs to know is how are employees gonna be affected by the next healthcare, how health insurance plan.
Well, I think we should communicate that there's going to be raises in the deductible or.
Well, I think Donna and I will get together and we will, you know, as far as this, uh, this part of work that she is doing, what, what do you call that again?
For open enrollment, for open enrollment. I mean, historically, we've given them the summary of benefits, what we're anticipating, but you guys have to agree with that plan in order for Walmart to print it. So, we, we can talk about Friday, we can talk about next week. We're almost beyond that point of getting that printed. I just think it would be very awkward to tell them something, not have any materials, and then have a change. So, if that's gonna be the case, somebody's gonna come along and help me explain that, because I think that's unfair to them. As presented the material we have, we have not communicated how that change will be and we don't have anything to communicate that change. I think that would be extremely awkward to hold open enrollment and then go and say, but your deductible's changing or you're gonna participate. And we need to have a plan that's communicated.
That should've, should've been made already.
Right, yeah, we, you know how well just discussing changes go, it, and how people interpret it. Um, it doesn't go well without communicating it. I'm not here to say that you should be communicating something, but if you don't have a plan to communicate it.
I understand it, but you know, again, we also represent our taxpayers and we do nothing. Our taxpayers have been paid more money to, to support the health insurance plan. Right?
Correct? Yeah, one of the comments that I get all the time is that we have a very good health insurance.
Oh, yeah, you hear it all the time. That's one of the biggest things we're.
Well, it's a benefit. I mean, I, you start to say complaint, it's a benefit too, that we're offering and, and that's, that's employee relations is an issue too.
I know, we're, we're talking about, again, I'm just throwing people bells out, we're talking about, you know, all the employees are gonna, gonna, gonna take this and we gotta explain it to them. We also gotta explain to the taxpayers, we're not making any changes, but we're gonna charge you you know, make, uh, five hundred thousand dollars a year more in your taxes, because we didn't, we're not changing the health insurance plan.
So, then you gotta look at it of the whole compensation package. Are you going to pay in benefits or are you going to pay in salary?
We're gonna pay salaries too.
You're, you're gonna pay somewhere.
We've been very good at raising wages.
Salaries are going up pretty, pretty healthily too.
Look at every business round.
Alright, I'll come over.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Simmishaw County.
Yep, yeah, we're going back to the construction right away. I tried to get there once and they wouldn't let me do it.
Alright. We're on, right, construction in the road right away. We have one request for, uh, construction in the road right away that is from Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative. They are requesting to bore under one hundred sixtieth Avenue, south of four seventy Street and bore under four seventy Street. Along to the east of one sixty Avenue. Uh, this is maintenance work. There was one of the high voltage transmission lines, uh, that they are kind of interfering, is interfering with them, so they're trying to reduce that. I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
So, the rest of it's in the field then?
Uh, I.
Don't have any lines in the road ditch, so I'm assuming that.
I believe so. The overhead is continuing north.
Okay.
So, it's gonna go up there and go north. I believe the high voltage transmission line's going east and west there.
I'd make motion to approve.
Stecker makes motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
Alright, um,
We're, we're up to zoning administrator, Doug, or are we going to have a conference call with Lippel or how are we?
I would schedule that. Um, my understanding is that, uh, Shelby County, uh, with, when they passed their ordinance, more supervisors passed their ordinance, uh, there was a lawsuit filed in federal court, uh, that, it, it happened on a Friday, the hearing, court hearing. Uh, maybe two weeks from this coming Friday, two weeks ago. And they are waiting a decision on that, but I think you wanna talk with, uh, Tim and C exactly, uh, get his advice on, on two things. Uh, how, how quickly you wanna go and what you have to do.
Yeah, I was told that hearing was on three thirty-one and they are waiting on the judges, so that would be about three weeks.
Oh, that'll be waiting a long time, I bet.
Yes.
I think they, I think it was four weeks. It's a, it's in federal court. It's not, it's not magistrate or district court.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
It was, it was expedited, be, well, there was portion, I think the hearing was expedited because there was fines imposed or some sort of fee on property owners in Shelby County that signed agreements or whatever that were in violation of the ordinance, so there was a decision on that already, which temporarily halted that until the full decision came through. So, yeah, I would.
Does our ordinance shadows what Shelby County has?
Yeah, it shadows it, but it's not, I don't think ours has fines like theirs does.
I, I don't, there are time constraints that people, landowners and the utility company would, uh, be required to meet, however, it would be after the ordinance becomes effective that they would have to do that, so. I, I'm, so, I can't, I can't imagine the way my, our ordinance reads it, people would be in violation right away.
Okay. And it's summit that's.
Summit's in Shelby.
Summit is.
Summit is in Shelby, correct?
Yep.
So, Doug, did you say you would set up a conference call with?
I can, sure. Um, would you like, uh, I think that this, uh, discussion could involve litigation and we could definitely use, uh, chapter twenty-one and, uh, go into closed session if you'd like as well. I could make the agenda item read that way. Go either, but I, I, I think that, uh, i- if you would like, you could, there's a couple of things I, you know, I'm pretty sure, we could, we could write an email to Tim and get a step-by-step process from him as far as scheduling a public hearing, holding a public hearing, uh, readings, different things like that. Um, and we could go into a closed session to visit with him. We could put it on the agenda to have, uh, establish the public hearing, if you'd like, um, however you guys wanna handle it. I know there's a lot of people, in the community, a lot of citizens would like, uh, would like this to be resolved.
Carter?
Over.
Your thoughts on it? I'm gonna catch you first and.
No, I, we just gotta start with, with Tim and Paul and go from there.
I think, I think it'd be good to get a step-by-step process, outline in an email, maybe review that next week. And then maybe the following week, have a conversation with him. Be my thoughts.
You're asking for timeline, what, oh, that, that sounds fair to me. I, I mean, the sooner the better, but.
See, it's in your area.
To visit with him, I mean, to visit with him, the sooner the better.
We want whatever you want right away is.
I mean, are we able to have a conference call with him next week?
I think you're pushing it.
Okay, who else to shoot for two weeks then?
I think.
I would answer that saying yes.
Yeah, I would too. Yeah, I would.
I, I believe that that's very possible.
Yeah.
Well, let's see if he's available next week, if we're able to do that, and if so, then let's go ahead and do that. If not, then we'll shoot for the following.
I'd like an outline, so I know what questions to ask.
Let's, let's send an email today.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that'd be better to have upfront, rather than looking at it five minutes before we have a call with him.
Right, well, I'll send, I'll send an email today and we'll get the information.
Yeah, but I think he'd be able to do both, I mean.
Well, I'll put on next week's agenda then, um, uh, full call in closed session.
Correct.
And I'll also write an email to Tim requesting an outline of board responsibilities. I'll include the board in that email.
Will you copy me in that too?
Oh, definitely.
And to Tim, I'm quite honest with him.
Sorry, I should.
No, 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 you're fine. I assume that, but I just.
Going to more this week, less more conducive to reading than that, probably next week, so.
Well, yeah, if we get that soon.
You know, fieldwork, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we fall under twenty-one, twenty-five, there, we're not gonna have people in here anyhow, except.
I will make sure Tim, I, I will ask Tim how that agenda should read. And I'll have, I'll review that with him. I'll probably just see how he and I, him on that email.
He's pretty good about that.
He's good, I'll be playing. Okay.
Doug, we, I guess I don't want a room full of people when I'm talking to the attorney and he's, we're on his dollars.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think you're.
Well, with the litigation in other counties, I think that's pretty clear. I think from the comments today and previously, it would be pretty obvious that we would likely have litigation with the ordinance as it was proposed.
Can I, I would ask that you review that report as well. There's a lot of information in that. Whether it be, obviously, there's people that are against it, but there are also, um, there's information about tests that have been completed on, on pipelines. There's information on the accident down in Mississippi.
Starship.
And there is, uh, uh, information from the Iowa corn growers. I, I mean, it, it's a, it's a big issue. And, um, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of people involved there, so.
Uh, it sounds good to me. You can move forward there.
Okay, um.
Thank you for working on that.
Oh, you're welcome. The bridge in Irvington is scheduled to be repaired now Wednesday. We were just called today, this morning, in fact, it was right before I came up here. Um, so tomorrow. Um so tomorrow morning, that road will be closed uh while they construct guard rail. Uh and up in Lincoln Township, Merriman's are working. They've got uh one abutment uh completed and now they they got, so they got a pier, two piers completed and an abutment. Completed, they got one more abutment and they'll be complete with the substructure. Ninetieth Avenue, last week we spoke about that. That's uh north of B fourteen where a fiber went through a tile. And part of our road was washed out. That has been repaired now and it's, the road is open again. The Algonah Airport Expansion Project is to be left this Friday, the twenty-first. Yes. Um second year road, we're having a safety meeting on that same Friday, twenty-first, out at the Nature Center. If anyone from the board would like to attend, you're more than uh welcome. And last week, we had a transmission go out of one of my dump trucks. Uh remanufactured transmission estimated to cost ten thousand dollars, so we're getting that going. And that is everything that I have.
Safety meeting on twenty-first at eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock at the Nature Center, yeah.
Doug, for that truck that the transmission went out of, do you know what it is for hours or age or any of that?
It's a two thousand five Sterling. Almost has five hundred thousand miles on it.
Is that close to the point where you would look to replace it?
It should be replaced, however, we got about ten trucks before that one, so.
Most of them Sterling, they stood up pretty well.
Yeah, we uh, they are. This is a tier two, I think.
Yeah.
Or it might be a tier three.
Is that a regenerator? What year is it?
Oh five.
I think.
Oh five.
I think the tier, I'd have to look at my own.
Some of the oh fives didn't, weren't regenerators yet.
And that, I don't know if CAT was doing that at that time or not.
That's got a CAT engine.
It's got a CAT, yeah. That's all that I can.
Thank you, Doug.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Doug. Wanna do a five-minute break before we start training?
Yes, please.
Yes.